Here we go.
All right, good evening, everybody. We are resuming our open session. We had an executive session earlier, so we are just resuming our open session at 7 o'clock.
Let's do that.
But welcome to the Select Board meeting of July 9th. As a reminder, this meeting is being recorded by Canton Community Television.
Eat some time away right now.
Mr. McCourt is out of town, so he will not be joining us. So first item on the agenda is again, public comment. So as I have been doing previously, I will read this statement. "The public comment portion of the meeting is an opportunity to listen to residents' feedbacks, feedback and concerns, but the public comment portion of the meeting is not meant to be a question and answer format. There will be no response to any public comment when presented. The public comment portion of the meeting is limited to 15 minutes total and three minutes per speaker. I would encourage those that do wish to speak to be mindful of others in the room who wish to do the same, so that we can make the most of the time allotted and hear from as many people as possible. Anyone who does not wish to speak or who is unable to speak due to the time limit may submit their comments in writing for the board's review and consideration." The Select Board will also announce the next open office hours at our next Select Board meeting. So that being said, we will begin our public comment period at 7:01. So, Ms. Smith?
Christine Smith, 50, Copper Smith Way. Nearly one year ago, I stood before this Select Board and spoke about the need to update the Select Board's administrative code as it relates to standards, policies, and ethics of Select Board members. After submitting my comments, Town Administrator Charlie Duty let me know that his office would work on this, and they thought it would make sense to perform a complete update of the administrative code, not just this one section, and that made total sense to me. I offer my sincere thanks to Mr. Duty, as well as to Jen Chamillion from the Select Board Office for all of their work on this issue. However, the revision to the standards, policies, and ethics seems to have gotten a little derailed. I'm not sure if it was due to an attempt to include other boards, or maybe this is going to fall under the Bylaw Modernization Committee, I'm not sure. But either way, we continue to see that certain Select Board members continue to ignore the spirit of the current guidelines, notably swearing out and threatening to assault an individual on the sidewalk right in Canton Center. I stand here today to renew my request for the Select Board to take action on this matter. You represent the town and all the citizens, not just the ones who voted for you. And yes, as public officials, you are held to a higher standard. This continued behavior reflects poorly on the town and has the potential to expose the town to liability. To be clear, this is not about the Reed case or any other matter. It is about leadership and leading by example. It is disingenuous to sit there and object to lack of civility when one of your own members acts in an uncivil manner with no comment or consequences from the rest of the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms.
They're not gonna answer anything.
Hello, Ken. I'd like to reintroduce myself. My name is Colleen O'Neill, where I firmly worked at FNF Power Equipment on Walpole Terrace in Canton, Mass., alongside my longtime boyfriend Jeffrey Farrington, a longtime Canton resident, whose father retired as captain of the Canton Fire Department. Recently, we were informed by the Town Secretary Charles Duty that our case regarding commercial vehicles parked overnight was on the agenda. Today, an executive session that was held at 6:15 PM tonight was held to discuss litigation concerning Walpole Terrace. Despite enduring significant harassment while working in Canton, Massachusetts, I have since moved my career to Boston, specifically working on Mass Ave, known as Mass and Cass, where individuals face severe drug addiction and dual diagnosis mental health disorders reside on the streets. The ongoing harassment from Canton, including unjust fines, unwanted visits from a sexual predator Canton cop Eric Wade, and personal property issues involving another corrupt Canton officer Charles Ray, who altered zoning regulations in 2016, has compelled me to leave the area. I now collaborate directly with the Massachusetts State Government to provide housing for people with severe mental health illness. I have reached out to Governor of the Massachusetts Mara Healy and Boston Mayor Michelle Wu regarding Jeffrey Farrington's property on Walpole Terrace, proposing the construction of 40B housing for housing undocumented immigrants. The town of Canton has caused immense emotional distress to our business and personal lives over the past 13 years. Tonight, I speak out in hope that Canton residents will support a small business that has thrived for over three decades, contributing to taxes and community welfare. It is crucial to recognize that 40B housing in Canton, Massachusetts, is our last option to halt this relentless cycle of lawsuits, police misconduct, and unfair fines that plague running a business in Canton, Massachusetts. This clown town of Canton has caused nothing but harassment to a small business and caused extreme emotional distress to Jeff's and I's personal relationship. This harassment needs to end.
These people don't care. Just sit there and set their little time and their buttons.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to address some questions I have for you guys, since we weren't afforded the opportunity two weeks ago to address items that were listed on an agenda with the reappointment of the police chief, and I had planned on going through and asking each one of you guys how you voted and what you, some of the questions you asked her were. How was the determination decided on to reappoint Helena Rafferty to a one-year contract? Did you interview and assess her performance one-on-one, or was it done as a group? Does the chief recognize the missteps that have occurred in the Canton Police Department investigation in the death of Officer John O'Keefe? Can you tell us what some of the questions you asked her were? What, if anything, did you ask her about her department's lack of following proper procedures and policies? What, if anything, did any of you ask her about the importance of interviewing, separating witnesses, and recording witness statements? What, if anything, did you ask her about the collection of evidence, the proper storage of evidence, and the chain of command on evidence collection? What, if anything, did you ask her about recognizing and adhering to conflicts of interest? You know, such as when the chief at the time, Chief Berkowitz, called District Attorney Michael Morrissey's office at 8:30 AM on January 29th and talked about the Canton Police Department recusing themselves because of a conflict of interest. When through testimony, we learned that the Canton Police Department actually did not adhere to this recusal. We had a Canton Police Officer, Kevin Albert, arranging witness interviews days later after they were recused. At 8:30 AM on the 29th, the state police took control of this investigation. Why were the Canton Police Officers in the Sallyport at 5 PM on January 29th? And why was an ATF agent also in the Sallyport? The ATF has no jurisdiction on this case at all, yet Brian Higgins was allowed to be there. Who were the three officers that were not identified at 34 Fairview? Did any of you ask her how an inverted videotape was turned in as evidence? Did any of you ask her how 40 minutes is missing off the Sallyport video? How about the library video? And what, if anything, was done in regards to the testimony and the text messages read from state police sergeant when they were driving around the Cape and the state police cruiser shitfaced and the Canton Police Officer Kevin Albert lost control of his badge and his gun? Were there ever any, were they ever recovered? Was, or was there any disciplinary action taken? I think these are just a few of the things that come to mind. This is your job to ask these questions, not mine. We are the taxpayers of this community. We should have been afforded the opportunity to ask these questions two weeks ago on an item that was listed as an agenda item. You were in violation of Mass Open Meeting Law. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris Albert.
Ms. O'Donnell.
The American Revolution began in 1775 as an open conflict between the United Thirteen Colonies and Great Britain. Many factors played a role in the desires to fight for independence. Not only did these issues lead to a war, but they also shaped the very foundation of the United States of America. The Americans felt that they should have equal rights to the Englishmen. The British, on the other hand, thought that the colonies were created to be used in the ways that best suited the Crown and the Parliament. This seems a lot like our current reality in Canton. This conflict embodied in one of the rallying cries of the American Revolution: No taxation without representation. To me, this sounds like our current-day Canton. While we pay all our taxes, our services, leaders, and police departments only service the entitled, selected few, while those entitled in our governance try to silence our concerns. Another driving force behind the revolution was an outcry against the judicial system that was in place, offering yet another airy comparison, ironically enough, involving six British soldiers. After six British soldiers were acquitted and two dishonorably discharged for the Boston massacre, the British government changed the rules. From then on, officers accused of any offense in the colonies would be sent to England for trial. This meant that fewer witnesses would be on hand to give their accounts of the events and led to even fewer convictions. Wouldn't it be nice to watch Proctor's hearings for his indiscretions? This makes matters even worse. Jury trials were replaced with verdicts and punishments handed down directly by colony judges. Over time, the colonial authorities lost power over this as well, because the judges were known to be chosen, paid, and supervised by the British government. Again, dauntingly familiar, the right to a fair trial by jury of their peers was no longer possible to many. John Adams once said, "Facts are stubborn things, and whatever may be our wishes, our inclinations, or the dictates of our passions, they cannot alter the state of the facts and the evidence." What frightens me most is even after watching the same trial for 10 weeks, so many still blindly trust and follow the corrupt and avoid the facts and evidence that would have convicted Karen Reed. There is lack of it. To bring justice for John O'Keefe, rather, they chose to keep supporting those who have factually been proven to be corrupt and dirty.
Thank you, Ms. O'Donnell.
To those
Ms. O'Donnell, that's it.
Who find our fight for truth
Ms. O'Donnell, I'm gonna ask you to settle down.
Trust us in our American rights
I'm gonna ask you to leave, Ms. O'Donnell.
So unacceptable to tonight. I quote Captain John Paul Jane Jones, 1779. I have not begun to fight.
Thank you, Ms. O'Donnell.
These people that hate, hear these people? Bye-bye, bye-bye.
I live in America, dude.
These people.
Ms. O'Donnell, please.
Talking to me, but I will stay quiet. No need to leave. Exercising my First Amendment.
Okay, I'm gonna speak. I'm gonna speak now.
Ms. O'Donnell, you're being disruptive to the meeting. I'm asking you to leave. Thank you. Thank you.
I have nothing to be for. I haven't broken any laws.
Okay.
I'm answering you.
These people, the room is so divided.
She only went over a few minutes.
People don't want truth.
Okay, I'm gonna...
All right.
Come on, we're in crisis. I know it's my imagination. I know it's my imagination.
All right, folks, please be respectful. Ms. Lombardi, this is it?
Yes, yes, thank you. Okay, listen, Rita Lombardi, and I can't believe I'm standing here about to say what I'm gonna say. My ancestry goes back in this town to the very early 1900s, and I've always had respect for the Canton Police and the Fire Department because my ancestors served on them proudly, and I always admired them, and I'm shocked that I'm having this discussion right now. But anyways, the issues that we've had in town relate to safety and trust issues. And last week, or whatever, you approved the police chief's contract, and many of us were opposed to that, and I just want to share some of the reasons why we have trust issues here. In 2018, the Canton Police Department responded to a car accident on Pleasant Street near Meadows, but did not locate the driver. An hour or so later, a passabout located the body of Craig Casey. This last year, when questioned by a concerned citizen, Chief Rafferty's response was, "It wouldn't have made a difference to his survival." Instead of owning this failure, it just, that's what, that was her explanation. In 2021, the Canton Police Department ruled Sandra Birchmore's death a suicide. It was recently confirmed that Sandra was in fact murdered, something many citizens already knew, yet there has been zero acknowledgement of this policing failure by Chief Rafferty or an apology to Sandra's family that I am aware of. In 2022, the Canton Police Department responded to the scene of Officer John O'Keefe's murder. The mishandling of the crime scene, the investigation, and the evidence collection was gross incompetence at best, and will be taught in criminal law classes for decades to come on how not to handle a murder crime scene. Instead of Chief Rafferty addressing these performance issues with appropriate corrective action, many, if not all involved, have been promoted. In any organization, rewarding poor performance not only damages employee morale, it increases employee turnover, both of which are extremely costly. Canton PD has an 18% turnover in the past two years. Oftentimes, it is your best employees who seek employment elsewhere, not the performance problem. If unchecked, your organization will continue on a downward spiral. In the John O'Keefe murder trial, we learned that it was Chief Rafferty who turned over the Sallyport surveillance video to the Mass State Police. We also learned that in addition to 42 minutes missing from this footage and people disappearing from the screen, and the footage was inverted, something no one has ever heard of in their life. Six weeks it took her to report the February accident, which almost cost the man his life, and now we're being sued for that, and we're gonna get sued for all these other cases as well. Policies and procedures are great, but there's no consequences when they're not followed, just rhetoric that, "We'll do better next time." That just doesn't cut it. The Canton Police Department in this town is facing countless and costly lawsuits as a result of their actions. We do not feel safe, and that is why. Okay, I'm not speaking for you, because you're part of the selected few. I'm talking about me, common folks. I'm talking about me, the random citizen. That's who I'm talking about.
Thank you, Ms. Lombardi.
Anyone who's related to the McGalberts, you're safe, but not us.
Thank you, Ms. Lombardi.
So stop it. I'm sorry.
I'm running over here. She's getting yelled at and yelling, and you can't right here.
Ms. O'Donnell, Ms. O'Donnell, you said you were gonna be quiet. You were disruptive. It is time for you to leave. Ms. O'Donnell, it is time for you to leave.
Are they touching her?
No, you're kicking and shooting, including court law. Yes, you are.
All right, can we just, can we just start our meeting?
No, we're not starting.
Ms. O'Donnell.
You ran over here while I was speaking. I heard she just got there screaming at the crowd, and the crowd is screaming, "Don't hurt her." Stay here. No, I'm not. It is inappropriate. No, it's inappropriate. Unfallible law, the way it's intended. We have help. I'm upset, but I feel I'm just being... No, you're standing in front of me while everyone else does the same thing.
Ms. O'Donnell.
Do you not see that?
Ms. O'Donnell, you're disruptive to the meeting. You're being disruptive to the meeting. It's time for you to go.
I'm right, though. I may be disruptive, but I'm right, and my fucking right.
Thank you, Ms. O'Donnell. Thank you.
Go, Jen.
Fucking Americans, people. Remember it.
This is what's happening.
Thank you, Ms. Lombardi.
This is not only happening in Canton, this is happening in your towns too. People are being silenced. People, they don't want people to speak up. They don't want people to fight back against corruption. This is, this is happening in your towns and cities. That's why you need to get involved. I'm gonna start getting involved in my town, my city.
Thank you, Officer. All right, before we get on to the next agenda item, we have two statements to read. So, Mr. Albert, do you wanna go first?
Yeah, I'll go first. Okay, as many of you know, I've had two recent verbal altercations with members of the public outside of my role as a Select Board. Despite the tremendous harassment, stress, and anxiety that my family, extended family, and I have been subjected to over the past 16 months, my interactions were inappropriate, and as an elected official, I am held to a higher standard, and I understand that the residents of Canton expect public officials to always conduct themselves professionally and focus on the business of the town.
Kind of a joke.
I apologize for my recent reaction and will refrain from any further public incidents that I'm becoming as a member of this Canton Select Board. Thank you.
There's people cheering him. There's people cheering him.
Thank you, Mr. Albert. An additional statement
Those people cheering don't want justice.
Chief Rafferty has placed Kevin Albert on paid administrative leave while an outside in... Please be quiet. While an outside independent investigation is being conducted relative to his actions in a case he investigated with Michael Proctor approximately two years ago, Kevin Albert was placed on leave on June 13th and will remain on leave until the results of the investigation are provided by the outside independent investigator.
Unreal.
All right.
All right, first one you...
Hey, Rita, welcome to LTL. You're live.
I'm still here outside the town hall with people, and quite a meeting. Hey, how are you?
Good. Can you hear Will?
Yes. Will, how you doing?
I'm doing good.
That was good. Yeah, that was quite a meeting, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, what happened in there?
We, we saw Jen, were they trying to kick Jen out or something like, what was going on?
Yes.
Well, first off, are you okay?
What did you speak? 20 seconds over? Jen spoke 20 seconds over, and she wouldn't stop speaking, so they had a police officer try to escort her out.
You gotta be kidding me.
And Jen, no, 20 seconds over, and she wouldn't stop speaking, so they were gonna escort her out because, you know, she wouldn't, you know, she wouldn't stop finishing her statement. You know, that's what we do here.
It's an overreaction to the situation.
Well, you know what? She had every right. I mean, you know, it's ridiculous that we're held to a three-minute time, and there's no consideration, and, you know, this town is in trouble. I mean, we've been in trouble, and we've been asking to work with the Select Board so that we can work together to solve this. We are not happy with the performance of the Police Department for all the reasons that were stated. We do not feel safe in this town for all the reasons that were stated, and if a citizen wants to speak over, 20 seconds, for God's sakes, let them speak over. That's what leaders do. And so they cut her off, and then they tried to throw her out, which was outrageous. And then, how many cruises, Ken? There was like four or five cruises here. Yep, Chrissy was here, and there were four or five cruises here, and Chrissy says, you know, "This is more cruises than responded to the murder of Officer John O'Keefe."
Yeah.
And so, you know, it was, you know, four or five cruises showed up, and it was just, you know, unbelievable, and, you know, and the McGalberts had posted on Facebook that they were gonna fill the room and, you know, get to the mics to block us out. Not one McGalbert went to the mics, because they had no guts.
Right.
They had nothing to say, because they have nothing to say. And so, we were at the mics, and, you know, they were being themselves in the crowd, and, you know, they're disruptive, but, you know, they, whatever, they're allowed to, and people were, you know, yelling from the audience from the McGalberts, and they weren't silenced, but Jen was, and that's not right, and, you know, it's just not right. So, you know, we, we need help. You know, we need the federal government in here. We need receivership of this Canton Police Department, because the Select Board is clearly not going to take action.
Yeah.
As much as we have asked them to, they're not going to. And the, we learned tonight, of course, we weren't in there for Chris's apology, which, you know, means nothing, because Chris has had this behavior for his, right, he's had this behavior for his entire life. You know, okay, so he apologizes, but he's not going to change that behavior, because he can't.
Yeah.
And, you know, he just can't.
What do you think about Kevin Albert's administrative leave?
What did, I didn't miss that well.
So, Will, what do you think about Kevin Albert's administrative leave?
You know, administrative leave, you know, great, but he should not be, he should not have pay. So basically, what Chief Rafferty did was gave her a friend the summer off, however long that is. You know, that's not a punishment for him. You know, that's not leadership. That's not leadership from her. That's not leadership from Kevin Albert. You know, the guy is drunk, you know, leaves his gun in Michael Proctor's car, leaves his gun in Michael Proctor's car, and then says, "Oh, leave it in my mailbox." So he's irresponsible, leaving it, not knowing where it is, and then he tells Michael Proctor to leave it in his mailbox.
Yeah.
And, you know, it's like, what? I mean, it's insane. It's insane. This police department is not run professionally. It's not. It's a joke.
Well, right.
And it needs change, and it needs change now, and we listened to the leadership at the trial. These aren't my words. These aren't my opinions. My opinions are formed based on their own testimony, and they were grossly incompetent at best in the murder investigation. We had three bodies, and we have atrocious investigations that followed, and that's a problem.
Yeah.
And we don't know how many others there are. So we are asking for help. We do not feel safe, and there's a trust issue in this town, and only a certain select few get the benefits of the Police Department. The rest of us do not get the benefits.
Will had a question for you. Go ahead, Will.
Well, you don't think that it's a step forward, at least? I mean, I was celebrating when I heard the news about Kevin Albert.
Right, he's breaking up on me.
So he's, he's asking, do you think it's a step forward about Kevin Albert being put on administrative leave? He said he actually was...
No, 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 no. That's not a step forward. That is to appease us.
Yeah.
That was to appease us, because everybody was calling for her. So if she didn't take action, then people would have been screaming for them to do the same thing that they did to Michael Proctor, and, you know, put and suspend him without pay. So I think she tried to beat people to that punch. Kevin Albert is her buddy. All of these people are her buddies.
Yeah, they're just...
And look, I don't know her personally. All I know is professionally, she's not a leader.
Yeah. Go ahead, Will.
I just feel, I took it like there, that it's a sign
Ryan, I just need you to tell me whatever he asks.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead. Go ahead, Will. I'll relay it to her. She's having a hard time hearing you. Go ahead.
I took it as, as it being a sign of them feeling pressured. So that's why I was really celebrating. That's why I thought it was great. But, I mean, of course, it's not, of course, it's not a punishment proper for what he did, but at least they're feeling pressure. That's the way I took it, because every other time I've watched the Select Board meeting, you know, they just filled all everybody and shut everybody up, you know, and then this is the person I'm...
Ryan, I'm not catching any of that up.
It's okay. So Rita, he basically, Will's asking, he said he took it as a sign of pressure that the Select Board is, is putting on now, because all the other, you know, all the other times that he's watched, he hasn't seen anything like this before. And what was the other question, Will?
Well, I was just saying that...
He's correct. He hasn't, none of us have, but it's a little bit too, little too late.
Right. No, for sure, for sure. I agree with that. I'm just saying that it's, it's a relief to see that they're finally feeling enough pressure to actually acknowledge what's happening and what people have been standing up against.
Yeah, and then I have a question here. Lady, lady in Boston's asking, what, what McAlbert's yelled at you? Who was yelling at you?
I don't even know.
You don't know?
I don't even know. No, I don't know. You know, these people that come to fill the seats when we're there to stop us from talking.
Right.
You know, I don't, they're just, they're, I wanna be kind.
Sure.
But they're clueless. They're clueless. They're clueless about government. They're clueless about anything. They live in their own world, and as long as they're protected, you know, that's all that matters to them. You know, they are not, they're not somebody you want in your court if you are in trouble, because they have no clue about anything.
Yeah, it's scary. It's scary.
It's scary, and these are the people that are running the town. These are the people that are running the town.
It's people that, yeah, that are running the town. All right, Rita, I know you have a big crowd down there. You're out there. I appreciate you giving me a call in here and kind of updating us. Please be safe. Is Jen, Jen's okay, right?
Jen's okay. Jen's right here with me. There's a bunch of us here. There's about 10 of us here, all in support, and, no, Jen is good, and, yep, and we are, you know, we're as safe as we can be, but we need receivership, and we need it now.
I agree. I agree.
So SOS to the federal government. SOS.
Well, thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you.
And thank everybody down there for everything you did this evening. You definitely got your points across, and, you know, keep doing what you're doing.
Thank you so much. We're going to do it. You know, we don't wanna lose our cool, but but sometimes it just happens.
Yeah.
And, you know, when we've asked not to give us, you know, to give us, let us speak freely, and the three minutes puts us under enormous pressure, so when somebody in the audience comes after us, we're already have anxiety high.
Yeah.
So anyways, well, thank you so much. I really appreciate it, and I'll talk to you soon.
Yeah, we'll talk soon. Take care. Be safe.
Thanks, Will. I'll see you guys later. Bye-bye.